I call to order the June 12 regular business meeting of Waynesboro City Council. I would like to welcome everyone this evening. For those in attendance, if you wish to speak during either the public hearing or citizen comment period, please sign up in the sheet in the back of chambers. Mr. Allen, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Item three is the adoption of the meeting agenda. And do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Allen. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries four to zero. Is my mic going? It is? Okay, very good. Item four is matters from mayor. I had the opportunity to attend. I did not run, but the torch run was held this past week and I did get to go and see our officers in the high school cross-country take the torch. The smoke from Canada kind of interfered with their total run, but Mr. Wilhelm was there. He also participated, so I'd like to thank our officers for that. That brings us to item five, matters from council members. Does anybody have anything?
I have two things.
Okay.
On June the 4th, last Sunday, I had the privilege of being the speaker for the brick dedication at Serenity Gardens. So Mr. Allen recommended me to the board and they graciously gave me an invite. So beautiful ceremony and was happy that I had an opportunity to do that. This past Friday on the 9th of June, in conjunction with business appreciation, Mr. Hitchens and myself were at Virginia Panel. And so we handed out certificates for free slices of pizza to 183-plus employees. And then plus I got a tour of that operation. Very impressive.
Yeah.
And they're located in Ward Street, so I was really, really happy to do that as well.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, like Councilman Lee, I got to go to Zeus Theater for business appreciation with Mr. Hitchens and also passed out the coupons for the pizza for the employees. And it's just always good to go out and visit one of the businesses in our city that has had such great success.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. That brings us to item six, and that's the consideration of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. And do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes four to zero. Item seven is to hold a public hearing to receive comments on various appropriation ordinances and amending the fiscal year 2023 budget in the amount of $10,267,599. I'd like to call on our Assistant City Manager for Finance, Mr. McCormick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, members of council. So item seven is necessitated by state code. Anytime that the city intends to amend its budget by more than 1% in any fiscal year, which for the city of Waynesboro this year is $1.38 million, they're required to hold a public hearing. Item seven covers items number eight and nine on your agenda. Item number eight is the adoption of some various grants, donations, and proceeds, the largest of which are some state funds, flow-through state funds in the amount of $64,911 to the Community Action Partnership of Stanton Augusta in Waynesboro. That's necessitated by them being one of our agency funds, and so we adopt their budget. The other ones in the grant section are for an award for the Office on Youth, for the Community Foundation, some general donations to the library, most of those being from the Friends of the Library, some more grant funds to the Office on Youth, and then various insurance proceeds and donations. Item nine is the larger of the two amendments, and the section that most is pertinent to your local budget is the $5,392,000 from the General Fund to be transferred to the CIP Fund. That's necessitated through the capital improvements program that was discussed during the 2024 budget process. These are fund balance from the unassigned and assigned fund balance that will be appropriated to the General Fund and then transferred to the CIP. The only change that has been made to that from the one recommended in the city manager's budget is an allocation of $250,000 to locally responsible paving and the reduction of the allocation for the purchase of a fire truck. Just as a note, the purchase of the fire truck, once put on a PO, takes about two years, so staff feels as if over the next two years, those funds can be backfilled to complete that purchase order. The second one under number nine is assigned fund balance to the school fund for school renovations in the amount of $4,879,298. The big thing to know there is those are school board fund balances that they're appropriating into their funds. That's no additional money from the city. Number eight can be considered as a group and introduced and adopted this evening, and number nine can be considered an group, introduced and seconded and discussed, and then forwarded to your next meeting this evening.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions? Does anybody have any questions for Mr. McCormick? Okay, right. I hereby open the public hearing. Mr. Hamm?
I want to sign up.
Okay. I hereby close the public hearing. Okay, that brings us to item eight, and that is to consider adopting ordinances 8A through 8G that Mr. McCormick just spoke about. Is there a motion to adopt ordinances 8A through 8G?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that ordinance passes four to zero. And item nine is to consider introducing appropriation ordinances 9A and 9B. Is there a motion to introduce ordinances 9A and 9B?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lee. Any discussion? Okay, this ordinance, having been introduced and discussed, will be considered at the June 26 regular business meeting. That brings us to item 10, and that's to consider reappointing a member to the Central Shenandoah Planning District-
I don't think we did a vote for that second one, did we?
No, just a motion and a second.
You don't vote even when you... Okay, that's fine, sorry. My bad.
No, no problem. Item 10 is to consider reappointing a member to the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission for a three-year term ending May 31, 2026. Is there a motion to reappoint Mr. Terry Short?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mr. Short has been reappointed to the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission. Item 11 is to consider appointing an individual to the Community Action Partnership of Stanton Augusta in Waynesboro. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mrs. Tiffany Sensiball.
Okay, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes four to zero. Moving right along, that brings us to item 12, communication, correspondence, and calendar. Mr. Hamm?
Yes, ma'am. This evening, I've got four items to bring to your attention.
Okay.
The first is just an update on the process in the coming weeks for review and approval of the annual action plan for our CDPG entitlement fund allocation. So on June 22, that draft plan will be posted online and made available for physical review in the ante building, and I believe we have to make comment about the plan in the online posting. At the June 26 regular council meeting, our Director of Community Development, Leslie Tate, will provide the council and the community with an overview of the recommended plan. That's June 26. On July 10, at our regular business meeting, Ms. Alastair Tombarsh will provide a summary review or overview, and council will hold a public hearing that evening. And then on July 24, council will be asked to consider adopting the plan. So we've structured this year, hopefully to provide adequate opportunity for the public to review and comment, and adequate opportunity for the council to receive whatever comment we get from the public and consider that prior to adoption. So just a little calendar process information for that. The second item is to alert the council to the fact that I intend to dispose of the modular unit on Afton Mountain Rockfish Gap that has served as our TIC for about 13 or 15 years. Under the code, I'm required to alert the council when we're disposing of property, and it seems like there is an opportunity to donate the property to a local community agency and arrive at favorable terms where they would receive a unit barely expensive relocating it and will be done. So be working towards removal of the trailer or the modular unit from the top of the mountain in the coming weeks. Finally, I need to alert the council to some maintenance and repair items at the wastewater treatment plant and the staff's intention to pursue a particular funding plan to accomplish this work. The incident that prompts this is the cover to the digester is torn. We purchased that equipment, installed it about 12 years ago. It had unfortunately a 10-year warranty, and it's rendered that operation difficult to fulfill under normal circumstances. Because of the opportunity for funding, which is a state loan program that has a component of forgiveness to it, so it's functioning a little bit like a loan and a little bit like a grant, we plan to bundle three or four other repair tasks that we were going to spread out over a period of three or four years in cash flow with fund balance and recurring revenue. And those changes or those repairs that we'll accomplish or would pursue include replacement of the digester cover and upgrades of controls that deal with it, some electrical upgrades that benefit the heat exchanger and some work on the heat exchanger, and then some general electrical upgrades for that section of the plant processes. You might be aware that when we built the new plant, we did not rebuild the digester processes and digester facilities. So they're a little bit out of sync in terms of their use and their age. But again, normally, we would have built these repairs and replacements into our budget, but because of the state opportunity, which is unique, we'd like to alert council to our intention to apply for that loan/grant. And then I'll invite Trafford McCray, our Director of Public Works, to come to visit with council at a subsequent meeting and give you a more thorough and detailed presentation than I provided tonight. So if council's comfortable with us at least making application, we can decide to do otherwise later, but we wanted to alert you to that opportunity and seek some... It's good, appreciate that. I have one other item, and that relates to the animal code. I had a question from Mr. Wood about the status of that. You'll likely recall that last fall, we did some work to update the animal code, but there remained some significant work to bring our code into conformity with the state code. And Ms. Michelson has been working to do that. We've been trying to coordinate that work with Stanton and Augusta County because we jointly operate the shelter, and the fees and processes associated with the shelter are impacted by this section of the code. That's not all that that portion of the code deals with. It also modernizes and brings up-to-date standards for care for animals, will not involve sort of the same questions that council policy questions that we presented to council previously that has to do with the number of animals individuals can hold. But more to the point, it brings our local code into conformity with the state code in terms of care requirements, care standards, administration, and then these fees. And we expect, Melissa expects to be able to present that at the June 26 meeting. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Hamm. That brings us to item 13, which is citizen comment period. I would like to remind speakers to state your name and address for the record. You'll have four minutes to address council. The light system will serve as a timer. Once it turns yellow, you'll have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light indicates that your time is up. We ask that you direct all your comments to me or council as a whole, and to be respectful of those that are speaking. Do we have anyone, Mr. Hamm?
We do. First is Mr. Frank Roth.
My name is Frank Roth. I live at 220 Jocelyn Lane in Waynesboro, and I have two issues I want to try to squeeze in my four minutes. The first one is my utility bill. We've only been here a couple years, and I've never really looked at it, and it was laying out on the countertop the other day. And I looked at it, and there's two service charges on there, one for water and one for storage. And I'm kind of wondering why I have to have a service charge when I'm paying for my sewer and my water. So I called the offices, I talked to three separate people, and nobody knew why the service charge is on there, what it's for. And the last person I talked to questioned me, she said, "Is it really a service charge listed on your bill?" Which really surprised me because it came out of their office. So I would like somebody from the utility department give me a call and let me know what those charges are really for. We have a service charge, usually when you get a technician coming to your house, but I can't understand why there's two service charges on my bill from the city of Waynesboro. So that's the first one. The second one was Mr. Campbell was here from VDOT about a month ago describing their proposal for the changes in the traffic patterns between DeWitt and Hopeman Parkway about taking that middle lane out and putting in a divider. I think that's the wrong thing to do because that middle lane is used for left-hand turns into the businesses on both the north and south side of Main Street. So that will be taken away, and the only place those people will have to be able to get to those businesses is doing U-turns at traffic lights. Because I go now to Planet Fitness, I go and get in the lane and make a left and go into the parking lot. If that change takes an effect, I would have to go down to the traffic light that's at Harbor Freight and make a U-turn at that traffic signal, then come back to the parking lot. And it's so... What it eliminates is people being able to make left-hand turns out of that center lane into the businesses that are located on Main Street. There's 23 of them on the north side and 26 of them on the south side of Main Street. So what you're going to be doing, the people that are going to be going into those places coming from the opposite direction are going to have to be doing U-turns at all the traffic signals. And you can't do a U-turn at Hopeman and Main Street because it's too narrow there to even think about doing a U-turn. So I think the city, mayor, and the council, whoever is responsible within the organization that deals with VDOT on changes to the infrastructure in Waynesboro really need to look at that because I think it'll be a nightmare. Talk about accidents waiting to happen. You're going to need left-hand turn signals just for U-turns, and I don't think that'll work. So I think the people really need to take a good hard look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Cheryl Helsel?
Hi, I'm Cheryl Helsel. I'm at 115 Summer Crest Avenue in Waynesboro. And I have to make this disclaimer. First, I need to say I'm speaking in no official capacity related to my work position. I don't represent any other person or agency. I'm here speaking as a Waynesboro resident, homeowner, taxpayer, and pet owner, not because of my job, but because of my 18 years of work experience, immersed in Virginia's animal laws and animal shelter operations across the state, I do have extensive knowledge and understanding of how things are supposed to be. But I'm not a lawyer, and I don't claim to be. However, I've been really concerned about the animal ordinances and discovering how all three localities are coloring way outside the lines, and this is the first time I've spoke on the matter. I've been trying to... I've sent some letters to city attorney, county attorney, Stanton City Attorney, Commonwealth Attorney, to try to point out a lot of the twists and turns and technicalities. And so I've given you all handouts and copies of that because four minutes... Is it really only that much left? Anyway, the point that I wanted to make is like about the fees and about trying to coordinate with the other localities. The Augusta County landfill, it's owned by everyone, but we don't have ordinances. I don't have to... As a Waynesboro citizen, I don't have to come to a city Waynesboro office before I go to landfill. I just go to landfill. It's governed and regulated, and there are Augusta County ordinances about it being open on Sunday, whatever. We would never think about trying to establish an ordinance in Waynesboro about a facility that's not even located in our city. So my point there is our shelter is located in Augusta County. An impound fee or this fee or that. It really is a facility-related issue. Just because we are part owners, there are other multi-jurisdictional facilities in the state, other shelters, jails, social services. The physical location of a facility would determine any zoning ordinances? Like, we wouldn't presume to add zoning ordinances to a facility in the county just because we own part of it. So I'm just trying to make that example because I think a lot of this confusion and kerfluffle, and we're coloring outside the line, and we're up in the trees, and all of this is because we're going way outside of the scope of what is really a plain and simple thing. The only fees that we have in the city of Waynesboro to collect from pet owners is a licensing fee. That's it. That's all code allows. If you own and operate a shelter in your locality, there's an impound fee that can be established and assessed by a shelter by ordinance. We would just need an Augusta County ordinance for the facility located in Augusta County to charge every person, whether your animal was picked up in Rockbridge County or picked up in Stanton, it belongs to a Rockbridge County resident, but a Waynesboro person found it, you know, whatever, doesn't matter who picks it up. It's just an impound fee, the same as an adoption fee. The shelter collects an adoption fee from... But there's no individual... Oh, if you live in Stanton, the adoption fee is this... You can't do that. It's multi-jurisdictional. It's a facility. There should be an ordinance in Augusta County for whatever, a $15 impoundment fee. And then behind the scenes, each locality... Am I already at two seconds? Each locality-
Thank you so much for your time.
-would divide up that revenue and costs associated. And that's, you know...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Taylor Halsted. I live at 1625 Edge Hill Road here in Waynesboro, and I thank you for the opportunity to talk to you today. I've really enjoyed using the Afton Express to commute to work, to and from work just makes my commute so much better. So I've been going to the park and ride that's near the Chick-fil-A and Taco Bell, but I noticed that there's a bike rack there, and I love biking, so I was thinking I could bike there, and it's not covered, which means that my bike would sit in the rain or just be like in the sun all day. So I was just wondering if it's a potential in the future to put a commercial bike shelter over it to protect the citizens' bikes so that cycling would be a more viable option? And I did some research on it. The solution costing as little as like $1,500 to as much as $28,000, not including labor. But that's, you know, all the bells and whistles. So I think that would be a small price to pay for our citizens being healthy, better for the environment, and just a more enjoyable way to get to work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Okay. All right, that brings us to item 14, which is to conduct a closed session under Section 2.2-3711A-1 of the Code of Virginia. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that this meeting be recessed and that the City Council of Waynesboro immediately reconvene in a closed meeting in order to discussion, consideration, and interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, specifically the city manager as per Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A-1.
Thank you for that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any discussion? Okay, this requires a roll call vote. Ms. Bordle?
Carolyn?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Allen?
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, we're in closed session. Okay, we're in closed session.